Good evening. Welcome to the December meeting of the Board of Education. Joy, would you call the roll?
Mr. Whitcliff?
Here.
Mr. Shear?
Here.
Mr. Beveridge?
Here.
Mr. McKeon? Ms. Schultz?
Here.
Ms. Felter?
Here.
Mr. Geary?
Here.
All right, would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we will begin with recognitions and awards.
Okay, seriously, is there anything better than a packed house full of recognitions?
Awesome.
Good evening, I'm thrilled to present our recognitions tonight. I'd like to welcome all of our distinguished guests. For our first recognition, we're going to start with an important partner. I'd like to ask Heather Skanover from Community Development to come forward to assist with the recognition. Tonight, we are recognizing a partner that is very near and dear to our hearts, a partner that goes above and beyond for this district on a daily basis, the Alitha Public Schools Foundation. Would the following please come forward from the foundation? Board President Todd Ramsey, Board Members Brian Geary, Jerry Berrios, Kathy Meyer, Stephanie Manning, Earl Martin, Susan Brooks, Nancy Ingram, Jason Tucker, Nathan Turner, and our amazing foundation staff, including Executive Director Cindy Von Velt and Foundation Staff Katie Bowden, Alice Snyder, and Maureen Hurd. The mission of the Alitha Public Schools Foundation is to connect financial and volunteer resources to enhance excellence in the Alitha Public Schools. More than $1 million were donated to district programs during the 2018-19 school year. Some of the highlights of the past year include: the support of student need with several programs, including the Wimmer Student Care Fund, Dr. B's Musical Instrument Fund, the Avid Lifetime Learners or All Fund, the Student Health Emergency Fund, and School Supply Program. And this is going to go on for a while. Everyone can catch them while they're amazing. More than $75,000 raised to fund state-of-the-art equipment, software, tools, program fees, and scholarships for Alitha Advanced Technical Center programs and 21st Century Academies. And starting this next fall, Project Lead the Way will allow middle school students to discover computer science concepts and coding skills through hands-on projects at all middle schools, thanks to an $80,000 district innovation grant from the foundation, and continuing the commitment to mental health through embedded mental health therapists in our schools and implementing Signs of Suicide Prevention Program at each high school with money raised through the Braden Robertson Fund. We have students who are now able to get timely access to mental health care for underinsured students. And then, the recent autumn/fall breakfast, autumn/fall, the recent autumn breakfast raised $165,000 in sponsorships and ticket sales, which goes directly to the funded classroom grants and staff recognition awards. Absolutely amazing, we cannot say enough. Wonderful things and how much we appreciate all that you do for the Alitha Public Schools. Thank you. Thank you. Next, we'd like to honor Alitha Northwest teacher Luann Fox. If you could come forward, along with Principal Krista. Who is our secondary ELA Coordinator. Luann is the Regional Recipient of the 2019 High School Teacher of Excellence Award, sponsored by the Secondary Section of the National Council of Teachers of English. This award recognizes and celebrates high school classroom teachers who demonstrate excellent practices and contributions in the classroom. Absolutely incredible, congratulations. Next, we'd like to recognize the Alitha Parents as Teachers Group. If you could all come forward, along with Program Coordinator Dorothy Hyatt and Kim Hawkins, who oversees all of our early childhood education programs. The Kansas City Area Parents as Teachers Consortium, which includes the Alitha Parents as Teachers, completed the Parents as Teachers Quality Endorsement and Improvement Process and earned the highest designation, the Blue Ribbon Affiliate Status, which makes the Alitha Parents as Teachers a Blue Ribbon Affiliate and places the program among the highest quality members of home visitation and parent education field, implementing the evidence-based Parents as Teachers model with fidelity and quality. Congratulations to you all. And next, we're going to honor some of our state-winning athletes. We're going to start with gymnastics. Would all of our, sorry, would all of our state gymnasts please come forward, along with your coaches and principals and athletic directors, as well as our district activities and Athletic Director Tim Brady? Yep, we're going to do everyone, all, all schools, yep. First and foremost, we're going to start with congratulating two individuals who placed first in their individual events. From Alitha East, Kelsey Meyer, Kelsey, if you could raise your hand. Kelsey placed first in the state in the balance beam. Congratulations to you, Kelsey. And from Alitha Northwest, Brooke Ehlum. Brooke earned an individual championship in floor, in vault, and in all-around. Absolutely amazing. And finally, we'd like to recognize the entire Alitha East team for winning the 6A State Team Title. The gymnastics team had an undefeated season, and this is their second consecutive state championship and their ninth gymnastics state championship in school history. Very cool, congratulations. Gymnast parents, come up and get a picture. Make sure you get a good angle.
Intimidating, you guys did the balance.
We want to see the landing. You've got to stick the landing, right?
Let's give one more round of applause to all. All right, and next, we'd like to recognize the Alitha West Boys Soccer Team. If a team can come forward, along with your coaches, Athletic Director Pat Butler and Assistant Superintendent for High School Jim McMullin. The Alitha West High School Boys Soccer Team earned the Kansas 6A State Title in Topeka, Kansas. This is the first team state championship in school history. The team had a 20-1 final record and had nine players earn all Sunflower League honors. Three players earned Sunflower Player of the Year honors, and Head Coach Matt Trump, Matt, where are you? Wave, wave, Matt, wave. Was the league and 6A Coach of the Year. Congratulations to you all. Soccer families, come on, get good pictures. All right, let's give a little more round of applause.
Great job, guys.
And now, I'd like to ask Superintendent John Allison to come forward for a special recognition.
This final recognition tonight is very much bittersweet. It's recognizing the service of Mr. Rick Shear after eight and a half years on the Board of Education. And I don't think anybody, unless you've served on the Board or been a superintendent, understand the type of commitment as a volunteer a school board member makes, not only for their activity within the district, but the role in which they serve our community. So, it's with great privilege and honor to thank you for your service and to present you with this certificate.
So it won't take long. But I do want to say a few words. So it has been eight and a half years, but it seems like a very long time. And, you know, it has been my privilege and my honor to be able to serve the Alitha School District, and I've enjoyed every bit of it, well, most of it. I want to start off, just a few thank yous. Right off the bat, I want to thank my wife and my son for being here tonight. This is their very first school board meeting. But I do appreciate them, because they gave a lot of support and gave me the opportunity to do what I really enjoyed and how much I enjoyed being a part of this and being a part of the district. Also, I want to thank board members. This has been, this has been fun, working with each and every one of you. And even some of the other board members we work with. I work with Harlem Parker, Debbie Daniels, Reed Ashley. This is, Alitha is very special. And through all this time, through this eight and a half years, we've had a very strong, very supportive, very workable board. Don't always agree on everything that we've always talked about, but we've come out supportive and we've come out working and making sure that we want to make sure the district is the best place and helping the kids as much as we possibly can. I want to thank the Alitha community, you voted for me twice, okay? And so, you voted me into this, into this position. And it was my choice not to run this last time. And it's just because it's time for me to move on and do something different. I don't know what that's going to be yet, but there's going to be lots of different opportunities. But it is time for somebody else to step up and fill in and step in this bar. And leaving this district in very capable hands. We've got a very strong board, enjoyed working with each one of you guys in every part of this. And then, I also want to thank just the administration. It's been a pleasure, John, it's been wonderful working with. Joy, thank you for everything, especially when I was the president. During that period, I mean, you kept me straight, you kept me on there, you kept me going where I needed to be at. And then, the rest of the administration, I've enjoyed working with each and every one of you. I am going to call out John Hutchison, big as man. You, you really helped me in lots of different ways. And I know you've helped a lot of the other board members, especially when it comes to that finance side of everything and understanding it and the operations and all that. Thank you, John, I really appreciate everything that you've done with me. Over the last couple of weeks, it was really a great time for me to really sit back and reflect and think about what happened in the last eight and a half years. And we've accomplished a lot. You know, I had very little to do with it, I was just one of seven. But it's been a very, it's been a lot of fun trying to put everything, everything together and making sure that we're guiding this district in the right direction and what we want to be able to do and how we want to be able to take care of our children and get them educated and make sure that they're going to be the leaders that are going to take care of every one of us somewhere down the road. And that's been a big passion of mine, and it will continue to be a passion of mine. Somewhere, somehow, I will still stay involved with the district. I've already talked with John about that, said that I'm not going to be a stranger. I'll still be available for different things. The pay has to be a little higher than what I've gotten. But we'll be able to move forward. But, you know, I did just sit down, and there were so many different things that we did accomplish as a district. But there was just a few that I really wanted to step out and really think about, you know? In the last eight and a half years, we had two bond issues that we came up with and for record numbers. We asked this community for over $400 million over the last two bonds. In the 2013 bond, we had nearly an 80% approval rate. That's unheard of, to be able to have the community believe in us so much that nearly 80% was approval rate to be able to say, yes, we're going to spend this money and invest in this district. And so, that makes you feel very proud and very good about the community understanding what we're trying to do. And for the administration to do such a great job of communicating out, making sure that the community knows what we're trying to do, where we're trying to go, and why they need to be supportive. After a decade, finally addressed the school funding issue, okay? That's been amazing over this last eight and a half years. When I first got on the Board, I had to get educated on exactly what was going on with this and understanding that. And now that I'm not on the Board, I don't have to be as politically correct as I used to. It's still not enough, okay? What they've, what they've come up with and where we're at today is getting us where we could be, but we should be even more. And one of the things that I'll continue to challenge this Board and continue to challenge the legislators is we need to do more. We need to make sure that we're taking care of specifically the teachers and helping, having the state help us take care of these teachers and get them to the payroll that they need. These are the teachers that are taking one of the hardest jobs ever around. And they're educating our kids that are going to be the ones that are going to help support us somewhere down the road. And we need more of that, we need more, a bigger voice, and make sure that we're pushing for this, because it is going to be the future of what's going on. And so, we need help with some of that. Three superintendents, so we had to work with Dr. Berry. We got to bring Dr. All back for a year as we were looking for the next superintendent. And then, we were able to bring on John Allison. It's probably one of the highlights of my career on the school board is being the president during that time, making the decisions where we wanted to go, going out and doing a national search, and then finding John Allison right in our backyard, stealing him away from Wichita and bringing him up here to Alitha. And it's been one of the proudest moments that I have of making sure that we've got a good, solid leader in this organization that's going to take us way into the future where we want to go. As I said, not a lot of pay, but part of the pay is I did get to graduate two of my daughters, okay? Mackenzie graduated from East. The pay is getting to be able to hand her her diploma and moving forward with that. Just this last year, I was able to graduate my daughter Cindy from Alitha North. And I've got one more, he's a junior, so he's got a year and a half yet to go. And so, we'll be able to get him through school also, and really looking forward to that. But that's a part of what, what really motivated me to be here is because, again, I had a vested interest. I have children in this school district, and I wanted to make sure that not only was I taking care of them and making sure that they were getting a great education, but then it was able to pull over and roll over even more so we could make sure that we're taking care of all the kids in the school district. We're busy building buildings, you know? So, in the eight and a half years, we opened a high school, a middle school, two elementary schools, OHTC, the Technical Support Center, and Mill Creek, in the Mill Creek Center. So we've been very busy with doing different things. And again, this is all due because the community was able to give back and they were able to support us, and through the bond issues, and see that the investment into this community is very important in every one of these. And I want to make sure that we all continue to grow with that. And while it's leveling off some now, we know that there's still going to be growth going, and we need to be prepared for that and be able to move forward with that. We added a lot of technology, and that was one of my biggest passions, is the technology. And what we did with this, we got the two-to-one in the elementary schools and the one-to-one technology. Again, one of the challenges with this Board, making sure that we continue to do that. We all know this, we've talked about this many times, you know, that our kids, their technology is where it's going to be, and we need to be the ones teaching them. Even though most of the time, they teach us of how to use the technology, but we've got to be ahead of that and make sure we're getting that technology in their hands so they're ready to get out into that workforce, get into college, do all these things. But we are the ones that have to be able to support that and move that forward. So very excited about all that. Kicking off the strategic plan, The Portrait of the Graduate. So when I got on Board, Dr. Berry was here, and we were just finalizing and running and coming to the end of the strategic plan at that point. So when we brought on Dr. All, we knew that that was a transition year, and we brought on John Allison, we knew that we wanted to get him up to speed. Very excited that we're kicking off the project, The Portrait of the Graduate. I love the focus of what we're doing, focusing on what those kids, 20, 32, what those kids are going to need to be educated at, be prepared to be able to do. We don't know what their jobs are going to be, so this is all going to be learning as we move forward. But I do think that we've got the plan in place, we've got the foundation in place, and I'm very excited to be able to see where that's going to go moving forward. And the last part of this is just this high-performing Board. As I mentioned, it's, it's been exciting, it's been fun. We've had some great debates, but we come back and we come out united, and we're moving in the right direction. And I encourage you guys to continue to work at that and move forward, and I know that you will. Moving forward, there's going to be three things that I'm just going to kind of ask everybody, you know? Want to make sure that we are encouraging the district and encouraging this Board not to just settle for the norm. We've done things differently, the fifth high school, how we teach our students. I want to see us continue to be able to do things such as that, making sure we have technology out there, challenging ourselves to be able to look at things differently and make sure that we're educating our students and getting them prepared for where they need to go. I also want to encourage this Board to always live exactly the vision that's right there behind you, students prepared for their future. Keep in mind what their future is. And again, I think this Board and this community and this administration and this school district is doing a very nice job recognizing and understanding not everybody has to go to a four-year school, okay? OHTC, it's a perfect example of what we're trying to do. These kids can come out of there and they can have a welding degree and get a welding job or a mechanics job. They could be making $50,000, $60,000, $70,000 a year. Let them do what they're passionate about. Let's make sure that we're not pushing everybody in the same direction. We need to individualize that and make sure that we're educating these kids of what's important to them and where they're going to be happy with and what they're going to be joyful with and what they're going to be able to contribute back to us. And again, the kids need to be able to take care of us someday, so it's very important to be able to do that. And lastly, I would encourage everybody here to really think about what you can do as an individual to give back to the community. You know, eight and a half years ago, nine years ago, because it was six months of campaigning and everything else, not that I had to campaign very hard, so it was fairly easy. But nine years ago, I had to sit back and think about, what did I want to do? How did I want to contribute back to the community and give back to the community? And I landed on this, I landed on wanting to be a part of the school district, be on this school Board, and help be able to drive what this community is trying to do to educate our kids. So I'd ask each one of you to think about that. What can you do to give back to the community? It doesn't have to be as big a commitment as joining and being a part of a school Board, but there are so many great organizations in the Alithas, in the Kansas City area, in the United States that you can be involved in. And really find some time to be able to give back, because it's important. Because everything that you give back, you're going to receive it back 10 times. And I've received this back many more times than 10 times, being a part of the Alitha School Board. Just getting to be able to watch the kids and work with the kids and spend time with the kids, it's just been a pleasure and it's been my honor for the last eight and a half years. So I want to thank you all very much, and, thank you.
Well, Mr. Shear literally ticked off everything that I was going to say about him, and, but no, that was very well put. I just want to thank you particularly for your leadership. In a superintendent search, it's the most important job that a school Board has to do. And so, I just think that you did an excellent job, and I thank you for your leadership there. You've always asked great questions and been a model for me to try to up my game and do better. And I thank you for that. And, you know, and for some of the behind-the-scenes things, giving us a framework for evaluation on a go-forward basis. It's all of those little things that we each can contribute in our time on a school Board, on any Board, that just builds on itself and makes, and makes the whole thing better. So, it's been fun serving with you, buddy.
Can I, can I add to that?
Absolutely.
I want his family to hear this, because if I would summarize you in just like a matter of two words, it'd be Steady Eddie. I mean, he's just calm, no matter the circumstance, and we've had some pretty...
I think my son might argue with that.
You don't know your dad, then. I remember Debbie Daniels, we were sworn in together in 2011, and Debbie Daniels, right before the meeting, you know, and you're nervous your first time. You're like, holy cow, the lights are on you. And she said, hey, I think you ought to offer to be on the Head Start Policy Council. So I'm like, sure, because early childhood, had no idea what I was getting into. And the next time, I didn't even know you, but I'm like, hey, I think the Financial Peace University for the Head Start Policy Council parents could be life-changing. I just remember you going, I think we could do that, through his work with Community America. How long did you guys provide Financial Peace?
I think it was at least two years.
Life-changing, I mean, it's so amazing. So it wasn't just kids' lives you've changed. So, and he's, and you have an economy of words, unlike me. He just, I think we could do that, and lo and behold, next month, you know? He's like, hey, I think we're going to be able to do it. And then, the framework for the superintendent evaluation. I mean, as school Board members, you know, we're here, we're here to serve, we're eager, but we don't innately know like the deadlines on superintendent evaluations. And Rick got us on track, we have what we have due by statute, you know, and on our timeline. And the framework's perfect and measurable and accountable. And if I were a superintendent, I'd be very thrilled with that, because just fuzzy stuff is not helpful for anyone. And then, everything always came back to the students with you. So, just like Amy before, I was saying, both of you guys, passionate, passionate advocates. So you guys should be very proud of your dad and husband, so thanks for sharing him with us. Good job.
All right. I see Mr. Geary leaning in.
I got the opportunity, I was working with Rick at Community America at the time when he first ran, and I remember his discussions of figuring, you could see his passion to want to really help the community, and where he landed was perfect. And I, having kids, obviously, in the district, I'm appreciative of what you've helped create here, and hopefully, we can come even halfway close to what you and your predecessors have done. But several have said it already, I think the best thing is you aren't afraid to challenge anything, but in a very positive manner. It's not attacking, but it's very, very appropriate, and that's one thing I appreciate most. And so, again, thank you for your time, thank you all for giving us his time, and good luck with him. Thank you.
So, it's very strange for me, again, I said this a couple of months ago, because we said goodbye to Amy, but we have a longstanding friendship outside of sitting on this board. It's very bittersweet for me that you're leaving at this time. But I'm also very grateful that you're only two doors down, because I know that there's going to be a lot of work that I need to do to learn from you still.
Okay, well, I can't be the only one, maybe. Come on, Jeff. Pretty much everything has been said, but I was wondering if you could give us some consulting fees to keep us on board for the superintendent search and if we could work something out. But seriously, that was, that's what I remember. Two things I remember, I'll remember most is your leadership during a pretty challenging time for the school district, the superintendent search and finance, funding, and keeping us on track on that, which I think we botched the first three years that I was on the Board. I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Excellent. Moving along, public comments.
At each regular meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the Board. We request that individuals, speakers, limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire Board. If a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel and audio recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the Board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state their name and address.
Anyone wishing to address...
Anyone wishing to address the board? Seeing none, we will move on to presentations.
Before we move on. So my wife, I told her after recognition that they didn't have to stay for the whole board meeting. If you wanted to stay, you're welcome to, but now is also a good time. You're my son. But you're welcome, this is a good time, otherwise you're going to be here through the whole meeting.
That's awesome. That's excellent. Market value assets, Dr. Dane.
Well, good evening. As we begin, Rick, I'd also like to say thank you for the years that you've given the district. It's been a pleasure to work with you. You kind of actually made a great transition for our presentation tonight. In fact, I'm thinking maybe you need to come back here and you can share the message. But we do, we do appreciate that. Before we begin, I'd also like to introduce a guest that's going to help with our presentation. This is Dr. Donna McDaniel. And we are thrilled to be working with her through the Kaufman Foundation. She's the educator in residence there. I have some really fun information to share about Donna with you though, before we begin. She was actually a teacher and an administrator in Olatheus at Indian Creek. So that's a fun little fact. And then she also, for those of you that don't know, she's the brains behind CAPS program in Blue Valley and the Northland CAPS as well. So we're really excited to be part of that with her in this effort. So as we begin tonight, two months ago, when we did the strategic plan, we landed on page 16, which had to do with market value assets. And we went over those really big gold aspirational goals. And I shared with you that we wanted to come back and dive a little bit more into the market value assets. I would echo the comments that Mr. Shear made and the fact that we really are trying to do things differently this year, this time around, with our strategic plan, really trying to think about the future and what we want to ensure that our students have when they leave us to be successful. Again, it's not getting them to graduation, but through that into the next chapter of their lives. So tonight, we're going to spend just a little bit of time talking about our market value assets. As with anything, we want to remind you that the Portrait of the Graduate and the strategic plan really will be our North Star. So everything that we're doing in all departments, we want to come back to that Portrait of a Graduate. We had over a thousand community members weigh in on that. We really feel like we have good guidance on what our community wants for our students. And so this is just in perfect alignment with our Portrait of a Graduate. So with that, I want to begin with our why. You may recognize these faces. This is the class of 2032. These guys are now in kindergarten. So it's amazing to me when we look at them, how much they've grown in just a year. But really keeping these guys as and within that Portrait of a Graduate, that what we're doing is to prepare them for a future that we're not really sure withholds for them. We know, we've talked about, that over 50% of the careers that these students will have aren't even created yet. So I thought it'd be really fun to share with you some of the upcoming, not only college programs that are going on as we think about what is the world going to look like for these guys, but also some more credentials. So with that, have a few things to share with you. These are the up and coming careers, some of what we know. So artificial intelligence, drone technology, data science, video game design, this is actually a major college, nanotechnology, cybersecurity, biotechnology, social media manager, robotics engineering, genetic counseling, search engine optimization, cloud computing, and the Internet of Things. So those are just a few of the things. So Mr. Shear, you talked about technology being the future and all of the wonderful things that we have going on. But this is the future that we're preparing our students for. So this is a chart that's actually tied to our accreditation. And I don't know if you've seen this or not, but I think it's a nice lead into our market value assets. The state of Kansas and part of our accreditation process actually now is looking at how are our students doing two years after they leave our doors? Which is quite a feat to think about because when they leave us, we're not sure what's going to happen. But again, that vision statement behind you, students prepared for their future. This is some data that we now have that the state is tracking for us through the National Clearinghouse. So as you look at that, the five-year graduation average for Olatheus, the state has us computing at 91%, which we do know that we have seniors that's on a four-year timeframe. We do have some students that come back and finish that. But what's interesting to look at there is the five-year success average of those students. So below that, you can see what that means, that they either have an industry-recognized credential that they received in high school. Students earned a post-secondary certificate. Students attend a post-secondary degree and/or they're in their second year of a four-year degree. So that's some data for us, how we're doing right now as we think about students prepared for our future. And it's good data for us to have and it leads right into the importance of the market value assets. So with that, I'm going to have Dr. Daniel speak to us a little bit more about the partnership that we have. We're really excited about this work and market value assets and how we know they're really going to prepare our students for their future.
Well, good evening and thank you for this opportunity. Real-world learning initiatives, you are probably well aware of our founder, Mr. Kaufman, and that this plays very nicely into his strong beliefs that education and entrepreneurship are the key to all future. And so with that in mind and the monies that he has so graciously left us to provide that opportunity, I would like for you to just think about some of these thoughts as Jessica was talking about. What we know in the future is that college, and we have invested millions as far as how we've invested low and mid-income students finishing, and will continue to do that with first project choice, then there was Kaufman Scholars, and now there's Kansas City Scholars. So that gray college degree area is not going to go away. But what we're finding, and you're seeing this coming to fruition, is that there's multiple ways for students to achieve success five, six years out of high school, a very quality job. And so we are putting some real strong attention and I would say really dollars behind taking a look at what are the multiple ways that all honorable pathways, not just one way. So this is a little bit of a graphic to show that. These are some of the pieces of data that might surprise you. Missouri and Kansas trending toward not as much enrollment as we thought. And completion rates are not as what we thought. And this is not any different than what we see across the nation. So this is data that is perplexing and people are looking into why. But what we do know is that students five, six years out of high school, your Olatheus students included, typically those who are in a quality job and that there's an income level for that, they have left high school with more than a diploma. And so what that's telling us is that there's something that we need to be looking at besides the 26 credits or the 28 credits that a student needs to graduate from high school. So you'll notice on the far right, and we did this with a variety of employers across the region, what are some of the things that seem to create value for a student beyond just the high school diploma? And we've landed on these areas and we call them market value assets. And let me just unpack that for a second. The market is the job market or the post-secondary market. In other words, it's something of value a kid takes across the stage and the day after graduation from your high schools, it's valuable to them. And that's what we're wanting for all students. And we know that that's not occurring. You've already done a great job of saying how the future of work is changing. We know that students in these, in our sixth region, county region, you're doing a lot of great things. We also know that you may need some catalytic funding to do this for all students because that's really what we're in this method for. And so if you think about it, it's very simple. All students in the sixth county region, in the Kansas City metro, need to leave high school with a diploma, but one or more of these regionally-vetted market value assets. In 2017, the foundation asked us to say, what is really going on? And your district was one of those districts in lesson one. Very innovative programming for a variety of students. But was it communicating with other parts of the Kansas City area? Is your welding program, is your advanced manufacturing program, is your bio-science program talking to the programs that are coming out of Smithville and Lee Summit, et cetera? That drives employers crazy, just so that you know, that the skill sets that we're feeding into post-secondary and into jobs is not consistent across. And that was the lesson two that we learned. But the third lesson is really important. We've had an uptick from these programs like yours in Olatheus. Lots of asks to employers, job shadows, all these types of innovations and internships and guest speakers. Well, what's happening is that these businesses, especially our big biz, are saying, somebody needs to systematize this. I can't take another phone call from 15, 20 different districts. So we as a foundation have put money behind lesson three and are really ramping up to systemically open up access to mid and small biz, but also systematize our large biz involvement. The last and final one is you have commissioners on both sides of the state line who have challenged us. We've stayed very much in contact with them and the governors, tell us what we can't do. And they're keep telling us, you can do these things. So your district is one of those with a superintendent leader that has said, we're going to be innovative. This is not work that we're doing by ourselves. This is very much in coordination with all of these entities. And the civics are itching to get this work accomplished across our region. And I'll just land on these four areas. These are the four areas that we're challenging and catalyzing across the region with all superintendents that are interested and boards of education that have it in their strategic plan. How do you increase the amount of students that leave with one or more of these? Work experiences are categorized around internships and client-connected projects, college credit, nine or more credit hours that is leading to something. Industry-recognized credentials that have been vetted regionally by employers, which is in the works right now. We should have that data at early in 2020. And last and finally, Mr. Kaufman would be very disappointed in this, is that we don't see a lot of evidence right now of entrepreneurial experiences. And so we really are doubling down on how do we provide opportunities for students in this area? This is the sixth county region that is the footprint. You might think that this is a little bit of a different investment strategy for the foundation and it absolutely is. This is the first time that we've seen the foundation invest in education in all, not just some, but all. And you'll notice that there are 15 innovative district superintendents and school boards that have said, look, we're already doing a lot of this type of work. We believe that students need to leave with more than a diploma, but we haven't quite figured it out how to do this at scale. In other words, all students. And so we have a nice group of 15 districts, 60% of the 100,000 high school students are represented. So those 15 districts represent 60% of all high school students in the sixth county. My boss, our CEO, our trustees were thinking we'd maybe get two or three districts. Well, no. And what that says is that there's a reason to do the right work and you're doing the right work. And these districts are also interested in figuring out how to unlock that for all students. The last thing I'll say about this footprint is that it's rural, urban, and suburban. And we couldn't have asked for a better opportunity to test this, to see that it works for all students. This is the planning grant that you've already received. You are in cohort one and you've already received a specific amount of money to study and plan and work with leaders in your district and across your community to come up with a plan that says, how are you going to do this in three years? How will you rapidly increase the amount of students that will leave your high schools with one or more of those market value assets? That pitch will be in May of 2020, back to the foundation. All 15 of those districts will be involved in that pitch. And what they're pitching for is, we're being bold, we're ready to rapidly increase, we want to be funded. Basically, that's what the pitch is going to be about. In year three and two, you can see that there's a graduation of money and expectations as far as delivery of how many students are actually leaving. On the right-hand side, you'll see an investment that we've made in the region. In other words, we're regionally investing across all districts. Awareness campaign, pathfinding, the business-to-education hub. This is a really important strategy to open and unlock access. If you're going to have a lot of students doing internships and a lot of students doing those types of projects with businesses, community players, there has to be more access. And the final thing that we've been in the works of putting money toward is collecting data that will help prove this hypothesis. In other words, is, are those assets, when students leave with those, is it really making a difference five, six years out? I think I'm done. Oh, this one's mine too? Okay. Before I, let me take a, before I move on, I do want to let you know that there are 10 more districts that are going to come on board in 2020. And there are three in the next cohort. So fundamentally, we pretty much have a footprint of all. Now, does that mean that everyone is at an equal pace? Not really. But what that says is there are superintendents like yours who are banding together and they're much more powerful when they're banded together, working with businesses across the region. So I just want to recognize that fact that this is a momentum that we're seizing. What we're seeing happen in districts are three strategies. They're taking a look at what they're already doing really well for 300 students. Now how do we 10x that? Okay, so that's the expand strategy. Is it transportation issues, is it for credit access, et cetera? Second strategy we're seeing is they're doing some really amazing programs, but they aren't at the quality or caliber connected to that authentic work experience or that authentic career. And so they're improving those market value assets. And we do see some people across those 15 districts that are positioning new market value assets to respond to some of the things that Dr. Dane was talking about, cybersecurity being one, that is right on the heels, thousands of jobs right here in Kansas City. So those are the three-step strategies that we're seeing evolve and look forward to pushing forward to May and that great reveal of where all of you are headed.
So we're thinking a little Shark Tank here. Really, we're really excited about this. So the very first thing is important to know where we are. So what I have for you right there on the screen is actually from last year's graduating class of seniors, where did we land with market value assets? So we have broken that down by school, so you can see that. The majority of the students that didn't earn NVAs were either with early college opportunities, so students that were taking college now or AP classes. We also counted students that were in CTE programming and had articulated credits. So if they were in a program and then they graduated and went to Wichita State or K-State, schools that we already have articulation agreements, we counted those. And then the rest of these really line up nicely with our academies. And so that probably, you know, you see those numbers there. So those opportunities that those kids have at that 25, 26%. So that's where we are with last year's group. So that's our baseline data and really excited about that. So what does that mean for us? First of all, and Dr. McDaniel kind of touched on this too, we really want to continue the conversation that the future for our students after graduation looks different. In the past, I think we had this, we, you know, society kind of had the white collar jobs or the blue collar jobs. And now I want us to think about the new collar jobs, that model of earn and learn. So you graduate, maybe you do go get a job, but you're working at the same time. Or more importantly, as the region is telling us, they will pay for our kids to go to school. So come work for us and then we'll pay for your degree. So we want to continue that paradigm shift of it's okay not to go to college right after. But we want to ensure that we're arming kids with these MBAs so that they can be successful as soon as they graduate. We have a three-year plan to increase our MBAs. So what's really different for us and exciting at the same time is that we are the largest school district right now. We have those schools that Dr. McDaniel shared with you. So for us to move very quickly is a lot different than some of the school districts that have 300, 500, 1,000 students. So we are really wanting to currently look in our first three years on expanding what are we already doing really well and enhancing that. So for us, that's increasing enrollment in our 21st Century Academies and our CTE Career Academies. So that would be the 15 academies that we have, O A T C and all of those programs. And then we have 19 CTE programs that there's an opportunity for us to capitalize on. In addition to that, we know that we want to increase the enrollment in our academies. That's some of the information that the principals have shared with us is that they want to be able to onboard after that eighth grade, ninth grade year. So that can be very stressful for our middle school kids to think about those academies and where they want to go to school. And a lot of them need a year or two under their belt and they're like, hey, I'm ready to do that. to do that. But it's hard for us to onboard at this time. So looking at our curriculum differently and how can we onboard into those successful programs. Enhancing the capstone experiences in all academies. So several of the academies, as we went through, we realized the students are this close to having an MBA, but they didn't quite attain it. So just some few things that we need to tweak, and then we can really pick up a lot more NVAs for those students. We want to enhance the work-based learning experience and internships in all of our comprehensive high school students. So they may choose not to be in an academy or go to OATC or be in CTE, but we still want to have that work release so they have that experience. And that means 120 hours of that internship. So it's very different than going and getting coffee or making copies. It's that they have their hands in the work, so we're excited about that. Increasing our early college opportunities. We have an amazing partnership with Johnson County Community College. So we just want to continue that partnership and, and look at ways that we can continue to get kids having that experience of graduating with at least nine hours of college credit. And we're giving our high schools a little opportunity to have some microschools. So beyond these things that are at the district level, we want them to have the opportunity to say, hey, we want to try this. We want to try to have a little microschool that focuses on artificial intelligence or whatever it may be. So beyond the district scope, our schools are going to have the opportunity to do something fun within, within their walls. Mill Creek Campus is involved in this as well, and in fact, Seth at Mill Creek is just running, running, running. He's got some amazing ideas for, for the students that attend school there as well, because we know those are incredibly talented students that just, right now, are in a different setting. And then lastly, begin working on programming to offer career pathways in artificial intelligence and aviation. As we look at our region and we've talked to the principals and, and working with our students, these are areas in those pictures that I showed you that we don't have a lot currently going. We know artificial intelligence, and I'm going to borrow the words of Dr. McDaniel, will soon be the blood of everything of industries. It's going to be everywhere. And so we really want to ramp up that look. We know it's going to take us a little bit, so behind the scenes, that that's the research and the partnerships that we're going to be working on. So at this point, want to open up the floor for what questions you may have for myself or Dr. McDaniel.
I was gonna, I was gonna ask about just thoughts about, I mean, a lot of this group and others know that the importance of this, but how are, is there a plan to sell the parents, the community of, and not just in Olathe, but in some of these other districts of, this is real, I mean, this is what it really is, and I mean, it can, stats and that can help, but is there a plan to help us share that out in, in other districts as well?
Yeah, I would say that the parent campaign is crucial. And I can tell you what we've already done, and we've invested in a firm that has literally sat across dinner tables from parents and talked about real-world learning in parents that make $25,000 to all the way to 200-plus thousand. So you've got a nice smattering. The concept is clearly like easier, easy to understand if you stay away from saying college or something else. So the key is very much a philosophy that we've learned from parents, is that all students need to leave high school with a path that plays to their strengths and their interests. And that path will be defined by what they're interested in and what they have strengths as far as skill sets. We feel like the landmine of saying college or not is something that will not sell, and we've heard that already. So I think that as we explore and see more students successful at earning and learning or, you know, going to, to college for two years and then doing that, but that's really hard for, to wrap your head around right now. Because parents, even our business partners that have helped us design this, they're like, yep, that makes sense. They go home, put on the parent cap and say, you're going to college. So, so I do think that we need to lead with language that does not shut down, and it's all about what the future, because there is no parent that wants that child to live in the basement for years. So I do think that there are some language pieces that we'll be sharing with the districts and the communications officer. I know that we already started to covalence that, but, and I hope that helps. I mean, we're very conscious of it. It's not a problem that will be a quick fix, but we do know some things we should not do. I mean, we've been informed by, by some research with parents.
Thanks.
Oh, Dr. McDaniel, thank you for being here, and thanks for investing in our district. And we will not let you down, I promise.
No, I know you won't.
But, so as I'm looking at the success chart that you, that the state computes, so it looks like if a student takes a gap year after high school, it hurts our stats. Is that accurate? Is there a way we can work on this formula to reflect what we learned through this pilot and?
Right. In fact, Brad Newswander, who is the deputy commissioner, and I were in conversation about this, and Dr. Watson also. So what, he, they're watching this work very closely, and I think that both Dr. Allison and I are on a governor's committee around work-based experience. So I think that it's in the, it's in flux, if you will. They are not unsupportive at all. Right now, this is the best data they have. National Clearinghouse is, that's how it's structured, so, yeah.
And we have to track something, right? Let me ask you about, I hear from parents like College Now, it's our, getting the college credit while we have students in high school, which saved my oldest daughter a full year, actually more, of college, and it was cheaper. A lot, the barrier is money. And so has there been any conversation around maybe some advocacy work to get Title IV funds available for high school students that want to get college credit? Have you guys discussed that at all?
Yeah, it's, it's a deep issue and on both sides of the state line. There's been some legislation in Missouri, A-plus funding was only after you graduated from high school. The legislation has pushed that into high school, but we still don't know if it will be funded. It may be a net zero, and again, kids are stuck with, they complete the courses, they just can't pay for them. So I think that it, it is a, not a unique issue, but it is a real problem across, it will take funding from elsewhere. Because right now, there is no substantial funding from the state.
Right. And even though it's a really big savings, so it could be the whole difference of even being able to get college credit, it's just out of reach at some level. So in your work, you know, that's something on your radar.
Thank you.
And I think that's it for me. Thank you.
So I have a question for Dr. McDaniel. There, looks like there's a pretty significant number of kids that go to college for your college, but then leave after one year. Do we look at, have you looked at whether that stunts their ability to get a quality job? You know, picking the track that doesn't best fit them, is, is that a negative?
Boy, it's a case by case. So some students will leave because they can't afford and they need to drop out. Some are, they find jobs that don't require the four-year degree. These are some of the students that are in IT, you know, those are some examples that I can think of. But I think what we know is that when students have a direction and a feel for what's the end game, how is this tied to my future career, they're more likely to persevere. So the worst situation, and we see this across Kansas City, is adults who have some college, have debt, but no credential. And so there's hundreds of thousands of adults in our region who have, have that type of a status.
And that's, that's been a topic of conversation, both with the governor's workforce and, and others regarding higher ed, because we're, we're being measured on our students' success at the higher ed level, yet there's no accountability on higher ed to do what it takes to support students, or why are the reasons students are, are leaving? And as long as there's that tuition churn, that there's somebody else to step in behind them, there, there really hasn't been a, a focus to make that a successful transition. So for the first time, I think higher ed is starting to, to have some, some understanding that accountability is, is heading their way, and that it's not just K-12 as, as we progress, but at the same time, being nimble enough to meet the needs of these, these students. I look at some of, some of that data, and the clearinghouse, if, if you go into military service, it's not considered to, to have, have in those numbers. The other piece is for so many students where cost is a factor, they may attend school for a semester a year, and then they may have to take six months off to be able to earn enough to come back. So those are the kids that it's, it's taking five and six years to get a, a degree, yet that's not reflected in, in what's there. So that, that perseverance and, and working toward that. So it's, it's not perfect, and, and Commissioner Watson is, is willing to have those discussions. It's kind of our, our starting spot. But for the first time that I can ever remember, the type of conversations we're having at the state level, at the regional level, are really, we spent almost two decades talking about college, 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 college. You know, every, every student needs to be prepared for college, and that's, that's not the reality, nor is it the, the future for many of our, our students. So that, that pendulum has swung back, and, and we're beginning to have those really good conversations. And I have to thank the Kaufman Foundation, because they brought us to the table, they've engaged school districts, they've pushed at us to say, okay, you keep talking about various barriers, so let's talk about how do we get over and around these barriers to, to make this reality versus something we, we talk about wanting to do. So I appreciate their, their efforts and focus in helping bring in expertise that none of us could do on our own, to help us think about this and help our principals and, and teachers as, as we consider kind of where we're going in, in the future.
Excellent. Yeah, please.
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
Dr. McDaniel, kind of jumping off where Mr. Gary was leading, we have different styles of parenting, obviously, and sometimes those are reflective of things like socioeconomic terms. And I'm, I'm interested in the experiences that you've had with success where families don't really know the role to play to steer their kids into programs like this. And how, what, what would we be expecting from the district's perspective in order to help infill that role? What kinds of experiences have you had with it? And where might we look at other peer districts to see similar?
Well, your final comment is one thing that you are already engaged in, and we're helping support those types of look-ins to other districts, either here and/or in other states. So that's one thing. It is good to take the look, I, you know, see a lot of people that have traveled with us over the last couple of months. We will continue to fund that type of exposure. It's very important to see. But I would say that awareness is the most lacking issue in all of our families. Because if you really think about it, even those who may have wealth, they may have a narrow awareness of what those opportunities are and may not even, so I, I think that it's hard to say that this group of students need awareness and this, these don't, because we, we find that even young people that are of means still need to be exposed to what is happening in, in the world of work and what is happening in opportunities here in Kansas City. There's a lot of places that we would take students and families to see what is here, and they never knew that it existed. And so the opportunity to do that before I step over that graduation stage is crucial, because otherwise, we don't have that opportunity to provide that. So I, I think that you're doing a lot of the right, right angles, but I do think it has to be intentional for all, all students. Otherwise, those who figure out how to become aware, they do, but those who don't have no opportunity to, to figure that out.
As an example, I think about kids who go off to college as freshmen, and they understand the, the advantage of office hours with a professor and those who don't.
Yes. The self-advocacy, that's a great example of, of those types of skills can be taught in our K-12 systems, right? So it's incumbent upon us to do that for all. That's, I think, the biggest piece that, that we see, so, yeah.
I thought of just a couple more things, if you don't mind. May I put this on your radar? There would be great value in doing some communication training and just broad-brush concepts on how to say what you're saying for the board of ed members that are in your districts, because our staff may be well aware, for example, I used to say, foster kids. And I now know, lead with the people-first language is say, a child living in foster care. Those things make all the difference in the world. And so it allows, it's the bow on the package that we need as we are advocating for changes that need to be made. So I would encourage that. Secondly, thank you for not using the word equity and, and kind of simplifying it to for all, because I think I'm, I get people's eyes blazing over when we say equity this, equity that, and I, I think it's kind of become a tired word, and so thank you for your self-awareness and, and using just the term of what we mean when we say equity. It means all, so thank you. And then how do we compare as a district? Jessica, on the five-years-success average and five-year-effective average, are most districts in this ballpark, because we are lower than the effective rate, and, you know, we like to be up there?
Yeah, I, I believe that we're right up there. Probably we have one neighbor that may be just a little bit higher than us, but we, we are very, very height achieving.
So this is like a baseline to launch into tracking this?
It is, and it, but it's, it's like you said, students that take a gap year that maybe have gone back in, they've, they've lost that track. Students that go into the military, students that are going to school part-time and working their way through. So it's, and like Mr. Allison said, it's not perfect data, but it's the best data that they have, you know, right now. But what we're excited about is we really want to put our emphasis now on the NVAs, because that's the data that we can control and ensure that they have before they even leave the doors of our schools.
I love it. Thank you.
Others, great discussion. All right. Thank you.
Hey.
And as we move along, I think Dr. Dane will continue to join us.
Yep. That's okay. So in the same vein, and I'll be very quick with this, as we continue to look at those NVAs and offering those opportunities, I'm going to share with you tonight two programs that we are unveiling and have students enrolling in right now, two very high-demand CTE pathways that will be debuting in the fall 2020. So Dr. McDaniel, in her, in her slide, had many of the organizations in the Kansas City metro that are focused on the workforce. And so if I can draw your attention to this, this, these are actually graphics shared with us and areas from KC Rising, and these are what they would consider the most high-demand jobs in the Kansas City region, the opportunity that these industries are telling us, we don't even have enough workforce in the next five, 10 years. And so we want, we want to stay in tune as we do this work to what our region is telling us. We do want kids to have their passions met and explore, but we also don't want to be creating programs that we're going to send them out where they won't have the career opportunity, or they won't have that opportunity to land in the middle class. That's the other thing that we're talking about here. We want every student to have the opportunity to have that middle-class lifestyle. And so we're really trying to stay in tune in the trends in the region. And so tonight, I'm going to share with you two new paths that we're going to have in that life science pathway. So that's why we're targeting these two areas. So the first is an animal science and research. This is a CTE pathway, so this will be at OATC. You know that we have the Animal Health Academy, and we can never staff enough kids. We have a waiting list. We turn a lot of kids away from that program. We live in the bioscience corridor of the world, of the world here. And so we know that we want to be expanding these, these opportunities for students that want to be working with animals. Some of these students will go on and go on to be veterinarians and, and work in that field. Others of these students, this is, this can have a very much more of a technical feel to it as well. So I gave you a handout, because I know you can't see that on there. But what we're really excited about is, right now, we're currently working with Metropolitan Community College for that MBA credit. Johnson County Community College doesn't have this program. And so what we have to do is, we will create an MOU, an understanding, a memorandum of understanding between Johnson County and MCC, so they know that we are, we're not overstepping JCCC, but they actually don't have this program. So we've aligned this with the programming at MCC, so that professor, that veterinarian is helping us with these courses. We're very excited, because the students that are in this program have the opportunity to graduate with 19 credit hours of college. They can walk out with their certificate in veterinary receptionist or a veterinary assistant, so like the CNA program, this would be the animal version of that, and then they'll only have one year left to have their animal tech credential. And then they'll only have one year left to have their animal tech credential. So hopefully, they could leave and then walk right into that. So we are almost full. We have 24 spots. And as of today, we had 20 kids signed up, and the window's not closed yet. So super excited about that. And then the other one, which won't be of any surprise to you, is healthcare. We know that there are thousands and thousands of jobs in this area. We never have enough spots for our kids that want to go into CNA. We run programs during the day, in the night, and in the summer. So this is the second program that we're going to be having. We have a partnership with this with Johnson County Community College and Alata Health, so just a beautiful path that our students can go through. And if I can bring your attention down to the bottom, the certificates that the kids can have when they graduate in this is their CNA, lobotomy tech, pharmacy tech, home health aide, first aid, CPR, EMR. And if they want, they can go on and get their EMS. So all of that before they graduate from high school. So with that...
They can get their EMS in high school?
Yes.
Really? That's new, right?
Yes, that's new.
It's always been you're almost there, but not quite over... Okay.
They have to be 18 to sit for the test. We'll have everything ready.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
That's great. Questions about these? That's exciting. Thank you, Dr. McDaniel.
Awesome.
All right. We have one more presentation that wasn't on the agenda based on questions that have really come up over the last day or so as many of our residents started getting their tax bills. If you remember, last year, we had an issue. The county produced the tax bills and made changes to the way it was broken out, which created some confusion. And this year, they've changed it again. So I've asked our deputy superintendent just to walk through how this looks and what it really means. And then this will also be available on our website starting tomorrow. So any of our patrons that want to come to the website, and they'll be able to see this presentation and get an idea of making sense of the tax bill that they received.
I know it should be very fundamental to be able to understand your tax bill, but it doesn't always seem to work that way. So basically, this is a typical tax bill. And up in the top is where your assess valuation appears, up in the banner. And that is set by the county. Johnson County sets all assess valuation figures. You have no control over that piece. These four lines are all the school district's levies. There's always a lot of confusion about the 233 unified. People seem to zero in on that one and don't realize the next three are also ours. So you have to combine all three together to know what our total tax rate is. Last year, we were at 70.665. The board reduced it down to 69.878 combined. So that's a decrease of about .8 mils. That you do control. Each year in our budget process, you set the levies. Where the confusion has come in, as Mr. Allison said, last year, there was some legislation that caused the county to break capital outlay out by itself. So it became a fourth line of levies for us. This year, it's rolling back up. It's showing because of the prior year number, but you'll notice in the very last line, there's zero mil rate. That one's reduced eight mils. The top line's increased 7.891. So we've slightly reduced the line still. But when you look at the far right, people are seeing a 30% tax increase. But they don't see the minus 100% down below. So that's where the confusion is. I have a message in to the county to understand what changed. Is there new legislation rolling it back? Or why are we kind of seesawing back and forth each year? But we'll have this out on the website because I know you may receive calls as I have. Once we explain it, everybody seems to understand it pretty well.
Very good. Questions? And actually, Mr. Hutchison, can I have you stay for just one second just so that I don't have you get back up? And we'll approve the consent items. But while you're up there, could you speak real quickly to the capital outlay resolution that we're going to... While we're talking about capital outlay?
Certainly. It's the thing that keeps business managers awake at night. Every five years, Boards of Education have to renew their capital outlay resolution. Used to have to renew it. If you recall, five years ago when we renewed it, there was some change in some legislation, but there was some legal opinion about whether or not that was a worded right, whether or not you could go permanent and continuous with your capital outlay levy. Doesn't mean it always has to be eight mils, just that you have that authority. That has been resolved, and districts are now moving to a continuous and permanent levy. So it's time to renew, and we're requesting that we will advertise this. You have to do it two consecutive weeks in the newspaper, wait for any potential petition for 40 days. Otherwise, that authority will become permanent for the Board of Education, and I won't have to have sleepless nights waking up going, is it year five? Did we do it yet?
Very good.
And it's a maximum authority, right?
The maximum authority is eight, yes. That's correct. But you do not have to... You can do zero to eight. It just gives you the authority permanently to make that decision.
And so we don't have to jump through that hoop of publishing?
Correct.
Again, because that'll... I mean, we'll be just as transparent because we have the budgeting process. But we don't have that actually. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry for jumping around, but I thought while we had him up there, we'd just go ahead and ask that question. Okay, moving back to Section 5, the consent agenda. Any items a board member would like to pull up for further discussion? If not, I entertain a motion?
I move to approve consent items 5.01 through 5.16 as presented.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Gary, a second by Ms. Schultz.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, action other. I'd actually like to ask Ms. Osborne and Representative from Meis Hauser to just give us a quick rundown on the audit.
Good evening. I would like to introduce Abram Chrisle from Meis Hauser &amp; Company. And so he'll be providing you with the overview of our audited financial statements for the year ended June 30, 2019. And then you'll have a bound copy at your seat. Thanks.
Good evening. First off, different face than you usually see. Audrey is out of town this evening, so I'm filling in for her. But I will quickly just kind of go over the highlights of the financial statements. And if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer those. Obviously, it's a 93-page document, so we're not going to go through all of it. But I do want to kind of hit the highlights. If you turn to page 1, this is the primary objective of the audit is for us to express an opinion on these financial statements. So the very last paragraph on page 1 is what's referred to as an unmodified opinion. That is the highest opinion that we can express as your auditors. It means that we believe these financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects in accordance with U.S. general accepted accounting principles. So clearly, this is a result you would want, reflects very positively on financial management here at the district. I'm not going to go through the middle portion of the financial statements. I'm going to jump clear to page 86. But what's in there are all of the financial schedules, the summarizing schedules, the individual fund schedules. If you want to look at a particular fund and see budget-to-actual comparison, it's there. There's also a lot of note disclosures that go through and explain the district's accounting policies, explain things like the Capers Pension Plan or the long-term debt obligations. Again, this is not the right setting to go through that in detail. So I'm going to jump to page 86. This is the district's schedule of expenditures of federal awards. Because the district spends annually more than $750,000 in federal aid, the district is required to undergo what's called a single audit, which is kind of a set of additional audit procedures that relate to internal controls and to major federal programs. So our requirement is that we have to audit all major programs at least once every three years. And we have to audit at least 20% of the federal expenditures annually. So the programs that we selected for this year were the special education cluster and the comprehensive literacy state development grant. And so the federal government lays out a list of audit procedures for us, go through those steps, and we form our conclusions. And the page to look at is page 88, which is the schedule of findings and questioned costs. And really, what you want to see here on that top section is a bunch of check marks in the no column. And that just means that we didn't have any findings in regard to weaknesses in internal controls or a noncompliance with major programs or noncompliance with anything that's required to be disclosed in these financial statements. So again, that's the result that the district want, reflects very positively on how finances are managed here. The remaining pages just simply put in narrative format the conclusions that are found on page 8. So if you have any questions at all, I'm more than happy to answer those at this time.
Any audit questions? Thank you very much, and kudos to the business and finance team again for excellent work. Thank you.
Thank you.
We've only got four, and some of these require some extra stuff. So I think we'll take these one at a time. So seeing no questions on the audit, I entertain a motion.
I move to approve the audit reports for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2019 as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Felter, a second by Mr. Gary.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Okay, 6.02, the capital outlay resolution. And we had Mr. Hutchison speak on that for a moment. If there are no further questions, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve a new Bel Air College's capital outlay resolution as presented.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Schultz, a second by Mr. Shear.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Okay, 6.03, 2019 Head Start Community Assessment Eligibility Priority Criteria Chart, ERSA Policies and Procedures. Did we have questions or any further discussion on this item? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'd move to approve 6.03, the 2019 Head Start Community Assessment Eligibility Priority Criteria Chart, ERSA Policies and Procedures as presented.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Gary, a second by Mrs. Felter.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
All right, and then 6.04, with this being Mr. Shear's last meeting, we need to appoint someone to the KSB Board of Directors in his place. So...
I'd like to recommend Joe Beveridge for that position.
I would be delighted to accept. If there's no one else, I'd like to step forward.
Was I in motion?
All right, I'd entertain a motion.
Yes, I'll make the motion. I'd like to recommendation to appoint Joe Beveridge to serve as the KSB Board of Directors, Region 15 Vice President for the remaining term of 2017 to 2020.
Second.
Okay.
Actually, are we going to go all the way through the next three years?
2020, 2023.
Oh, yeah.
Because it's a three-year appointment.
Okay, 2023, that's 2020 on the script.
Oh.
I did.
I thought I changed it, sorry.
No, I think on the paper it says...
You guys.
Techy.
Okay. I recommend to appoint Joe Beveridge to serve as the KSB Board of Directors, Region 15 Vice President for 2020 to 2023.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Shear, a second by Mrs. Felter.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Excellent, all right. Moving on, actions, bids, contracts, and agreements. I'd ask if there are any questions on any of these items that we'd like to pull up for further discussion? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve action, bids, contracts, and agreements. 7.01 through 7.09 as presented. Second.
Motion by Mr. Gary, a second by Mr. Shear.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Whitcliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
All right, moving along. You can see our future action items. I'd encourage anyone that sees questions on those to get them to the appropriate staff. Information written, the monthly November Head Start Directors Report, along with parent-teacher conference totals, looked like we were pretty steady and kind of as usual, business as usual on conferences. So board topics for discussion. Do we have more stuff to say, guys? Okay, seeing none, superintendent comments?
Just a couple items this evening. First is just a compliment. Over the last couple of weeks, I got the opportunity to attend several middle school and high school musicals. And the talent and work from the actors to the tech crews, it was amazing to see the type of products that our students and staff put out. So very proud of what they accomplished. A couple of weeks ago, I got to attend the National Conference for the American Heart Association and to participate in a press conference as a representative of K-12 education in which the American Heart Association is stepping out in a big way to address vaping. They are committing over $20 million into research on how nicotine impacts the adolescent brain. You would think we'd have some of those answers by now, but particularly because vaping is so different than traditional and how it impacts the body. So they have committed those types of resources as well as they will be rolling out here after the first of the year a national campaign called #QuitLying. And it's geared toward high school students and adolescents and being able to use social media to say, "Jewell and others quit lying about the impacts. This is not safe." And to really do a community effort to get parents and students to understand how dangerous this really is. So it was very informative that Alata was able to participate. And I know that they are eager for us to continue to participate in their initiative moving forward. So I think that's a real positive based on the actions we've already taken around vaping. This week, we held a vaping summit. So we had 10 students from each of our high schools and had an opportunity to have a couple guest speakers come in. Taylor Webb, who you may have seen in the newspaper, was a K-State student and discovered he'd gotten addicted to vaping and was able to talk to them about how easy it was for him to pick it up and what impact it had and how difficult it was to quit. And then we had Mr. Kufel with Johnson County Mental Health, who talked about the addiction component and the physiological and the oil pens now that we're seeing with the THC and all those types of things. So we had a half-a-day incredible conversation with our students. They generated a lot of good ideas on how we can communicate with them. It was really heartening to see when a question was asked around middle schools because we're beginning to see it more and more in middle schools. It's pushing down to younger students. And one of their ideas was for high school students to go talk to the middle schoolers about vaping. And when we asked how many of you would be interested in doing that, almost every single hand went up. So some really good starting points that our students provided us.